Good afternoon. My name is D.L. Richardson. I've been told I have two and a half hours.
Yee-haw!
Since I've been told other things. And I want to say welcome on behalf of AAUW and on behalf of Ashland News, who's co-sponsoring with AAUW to set this afternoon's program. For those who don't know, you can find more information about ashland.news out front. And I'm so excited about us being here and being able to be a part of the community, excuse me, and be with you. In my brain, I'm thinking, what a wonderful time this is and what a great opportunity it is for ashland.news to share with you. Because one of the things we love doing is what we think about yesterday with the Kentucky Derby. A lot of people said, hey, are you sad? Because journalism lost. I said, nope. No, we're exactly where we're supposed to be, behind the people who think they're in power. And how do we make sure they know that we're going to watch them as they continue working and trying to do what's best for our community? And so for that, I'm so excited to represent or to see all the candidates. I'm so looking forward to hearing you. I'm looking forward for two reasons. One, because of ashland.news. And two, because of the organization I support, which is Black Southern Oregon Alliance and the work that we do. And part of that work is with our Oregon, Southern Oregon, excuse me, Black Student Success and how that works. And so wanting to know how our candidates feel about the work supporting Black Southern Oregon's success and making sure that they realize and that we see how the BIPOC students are supported and cared for here in Ashland as well. So I'm very interested to see what some of your thoughts are and what your beliefs are as we move forward. So with that, I'll say thank you so much. Thanks again for allowing us to be here. Again, please check the table for ashland.news out front. If you haven't been a subscriber, please think about doing so. And let me represent, or let me introduce then Regina Ayers. And thank you so much again. Shall I break it?
Thank you. You did, no, she didn't even come after you. He didn't even use his two and a half minutes, so. Good speaker. Yes, I am Regina Ayers, and I am the co-president of the Ashland branch of AAUW. And we are co-sponsoring this event with Ashland News. We also have a table out front with some literature, so you might want to check out whether you're interested in joining AAUW here in Southern Oregon. So the first thing I'd like to do is to thank the candidates that are here today that are running for this very important position. We have eight candidates here. We had one candidate that decided to withdraw from the race, so we have eight candidates that will speak to you today. These people are willing to step forward and put themselves out into the community and share their ideas and to ensure that our children are well represented in the Ashland School District. They are willing to be public servants. And that is a real risk-taking position. You're out in the community, and you're not always going to please everybody, but they are willing to offer their time and energy and ideas in order to support our children here in the Ashland School District. I'm the moderator. I guess I'll put my name up here. We are being video recorded, and this event will be on the AAUW website and also the Ashland News website probably later this week. I'm going to go through now the guidelines that we have given the candidates. Well, first of all, I'm going to mention some important dates. So everybody should have received their voter's pamphlet. This came out maybe even a couple of weeks ago. April 29th was the last date that you could register to vote, and the ballots started dropping on May 2nd, which is Friday. So some of you may have already received your ballots, but if you haven't, I would give them some time to come in the mail. But if you don't receive the voter's pamphlet or your ballot, you need to contact the Jackson County Election Office, and they can be located in Medford. They are at 1101 West Main upstairs. So I would contact them if you haven't received those important materials. So now for the guidelines. This is a nonpartisan race. None of the candidates are affiliated with any particular party. The candidates have brought literature about themselves. They are out in the lobby, and you can pick some of that up. We have, the candidates did not receive the questions, the prepared questions prior to the event. Those questions were put together by the Public Policy Team at AAUW. And we have a timekeeper. They're going to be allowed one minute per statement, per question, and also they will be allowed a closing statement after the Q and A. So there is Q and A from the audience. You have been given three-by-five cards and a pencil that will enable you to write a question. And if you want it to a specific candidate, please put that on there. Pass those cards to the end of the aisles, and we will collect them, and we will be asking them before the end of the event. What else do I want to say here? I'm going to do the thank yous up front because at the end, a lot of people can't hear them. So I'm going to thank Lori Kaplan, who helped with Ashland News, Lisa Werner, who is the Chair of our Public Policy Team at AAUW, and also our timekeeper down here in the front, and also the Ashland High School Theater Staff. So now I'm going to introduce our questioner, Catherine Lutz. Catherine is the State President of Oregon, AAUW, and she is also a member of the Ashland Branch. So Catherine, would you like to come up?
I would. Guess I will.
All right, guys, let's get this party started. Woo! So, all candidates were invited to attend. One candidate has chosen not to participate today because she has withdrawn, and that's Elisa Hoxley. So for position one, we have Ann Gaffney and Jordan Rooklin. For position three, you guys might just want to wave, you know. We have Noel Christensen, Deltra Ferguson. We spelled, we accidentally misspelled Deltra's name. Actually, that was probably an autocorrect because there is no delta, it's only a delta, right? Anyway, Deltra Ferguson and Suzanne McGraw are running for position three. And position four is Rebecca Dyson, Grant Joliffe. Grant, did I pronounce that right? Great. And Alex Sol. So I'm going to encourage each of you guys to tell us your name. We can see it, I've announced it, you can't say it enough, right? Okay. Question number one, I'm going to start with Ann. Okay, Ann, how would you, as a school board member, support continued educational excellence in the Ashland School District? One minute, guys.
Do I need to turn on the microphone, or is it on already?
It's on.
Great.
You can pull it up, pull it up close, or you can take it out, yeah.
How's that? Better. Okay. Continued educational excellence? Is that the key word of the question there? Absolutely, continued educational excellence.
My name's Ann Gaffney. I have a freshman here at Ashland High School, and I chose to move to Ashland in order to provide the best education possible for my child. We were in a situation where we could choose to move anywhere in the country. We had sold our home 3,000 miles from here, and we're deciding where to go next. And education was the number one thing on our list. And so Ashland not only has a great reputation for providing a fantastic education, but I believe has all the ingredients necessary to continue to do so. We have a fantastic community here that supports our schools. We have excellent staff in our district, and we have students who represent many parts of sort of the spectrum of the United States, and that is exciting. And so we need to pull together as a group to make sure that we capitalize on all of the positive energy that we have here in Ashland and put it to good work. And as we go through, I hope I'll get an opportunity to share more specifics about that with you.
Thank you, Ann. Go ahead, Jordan.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. I am Jordan Rooklin. I'm also running for position one. And I got to say, it's been 18 years since I was last on this stage, and I'm having some pretty scary flashbacks of being a 17-year-old again. I am a product of our Ashland Schools. And my experience in Ashland, at Briscoe, at the middle school, at the high school, is what set me up for success, for being here today in front of you all, a proud member of our community and so grateful to be back here. Because my daughter Kimberly will be graduating in class of 2042. And so it is essential for me for the next 17 to 18 years to be committed to the school district. And the first thing that we need to do to be able to have continued excellence in education for our students is we need to stabilize our finances. Without knowing how much money we have, both now and in the future, we're not going to be able to prioritize which programs we need to support to continue our excellent reputation and supporting all of our students in succeeding and growing. So thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, go ahead, Noel.
Lisa's keeping time for us, so if you see us all staring straight down, it's because she's giving us a green, yellow, red. I'm Noel Christensen. I've been in Ashland for 30 years, and I've seen the schools grow and shrink and have been very concerned about the declining enrollment lately. And I think the continued educational excellence is an important way to look at it. We do need to focus on finances. We need to fund the schools properly, but we also need to increase enrollment so that we can get more funding. And I think there are a lot of ways we can do that. Partnering in this community with SOU. I'm an alum from SOU from 1999, and partnering with groups like OSF to give the kids some career guidance, give them trade school preparation. I think that Ashland can continue to thrive if it embraces the entire community and doesn't just try to work in a silo as a school district. And as a board member, I hope to be that bridge to the business community in town. I've been working in this valley for 25 years, and I do think it's really important for the school district to partner with the business community in order to keep that continuing education focus for the kids and prepare them for college or trades wherever they decide to head after high school. Thank you.
This works. Does it work? It does. Okay, thank you, Noel. Go ahead, Deltra.
Say it.
You got a mic?
I do.
It's you, Deltra.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Deltra Ferguson. And I believe that we, this question's actually pretty easy. My wife and I have a couple of graduates from the Ashland School District, and we got to watch them go through the whole thing. And what's exciting about it is that our graduates are now going to graduate again very, very soon, each from their respective universities. We're very, very proud of them. And I'm very, very aware that the reason that they are being successful now is because they went through this school system. It created a foundation, the teachers, the faculty, the coaches, the parents created that foundation for their success. I've got a couple of really cool young adult human beings, and it's the school district that helped them get there. I want to keep that going. Excellence. You betcha.
Thank you, Deltra. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Hi, I'm Suzanne McGraw. Thanks for coming today. Continued educational excellence. I would like to look at it in three different parts. First of all, stabilize the budget. Dr. Hatrick, our superintendent, is already making very sound but hard decisions to get to that place, to rebuild our reserve fund. That's the absolute basis of it. Number two, we need to look at our rankings and make a plan to improve them. Those rankings help us to focus in with the children as our priority, with our students as our priority, but they are good indicators because they're the indicators that people look at to get to the enrollments, to build our enrollments. And number three, I want to work with the community and pull in the incredible skillset that our community offers. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Hi, Rebecca Dyson. I am, I have been on the board for four years. I'm the one incumbent who is up on this stage, running for reelection. I've put four students through the school district. We moved here because of the excellence of the Ashland School District. And I like that you said continued excellence and not, you know, bringing back excellence. I do want to just point out a little thing. I know there's been a lot of concern publicly about our rankings, and I do want to point out that I actually just looked up where we are. There was a new U.S. News &amp; World report ranking that came out where Ashland High School is now back up to number 36 in the state. And on the NISH report, the Ashland School District is now at number 13. This is above, far above any of our other local school districts. So, I mean, we are actually really doing impressively well and coming back up those rankings. Now, that doesn't mean our work is done by any means, and as we have all commented, one of the most important things is going to be working within our budget. So I have 10 seconds to solve this problem. I'm not going to do it, but let me just say, we need to be smart about it. We need to make cuts that will not affect our forward-facing students, and that's really what the work of the board is going to be about coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Go ahead, Grant.
I am Grant Joliffe, running for position four. So excellence has been something that brought my wife and I back to Ashland. We're both high school graduates from Ashland. Our older son has graduated out and currently at the middle school. So we definitely believe in our, in our school district and support it. Speaking of that, I think supporting the diversity that Ashland brings. We are a unique community. We offer, we have a college right across the street from our high school. We have a lot of assets available to us in this community that we can draw from. They're a valuable stakeholder in our school system. To, many people spoke about the budget. The budget is obviously the focus. It's not the only focus, but it is a strong focus for our sustainability in the district. And also celebrating the many things we're doing right, letting the people know that we're, we're out there, we're doing, we're, you know, succeeding for our students. And then also just collaborating with all the stakeholders in this. We don't have to know all the answers. We know, we need to access the people that do have the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Go ahead, Alex.
Hi, everybody. I have 10 minutes. Is that correct? No. No. So what I would do for continued excellence and improving the academic outcomes, one, it cannot be continued excellence if we are not in the top tier of schools in Oregon, and we're not. So I don't, I don't want to double speak. I don't want to be splitting the baby. We're not operating at an optimal level. And so what I would do is I would reduce the overreliance on standardized testing, and I would promote student-centered learning. My daughter is 14. She's neurodivergent and part of the LGBTQ community. She endures incessant bullying at school. That is not being dealt with. And also, she complains of the redundancy of the amount of homework. Takes away from her family life. And I would look at the model of Finland. I want everyone to look up what they did. They reduced shorter school days, minimal homework, promoting family life, and yet they make a rank among the top globally for education standards. And last, I will conclude, this has to get rectified, what's been happening with the way that money has been spent in our community. That's it.
Thank you for finishing that sentence. Great. Okay, guys. Next question. I'm going to start with you, Jordan. All right. Have you read the targeted budget reductions that Superintendent Hatrick has put forward and shared with the school district? Yes or no? And if yes, what do you think of them? Go ahead.
Catherine? Yes, I have read the report, and I do want to say thank you so much to not only our superintendent. Sorry, y'all, the ghosts in the hallways. Is this better, hopefully? So yes, I have read the report, and the report represents some very difficult but very essential decisions that our district has to make right now in this moment. Because we are facing a cash crisis where we overspent last year and has put us in a negative position entering into next year. These decisions happened faster than any of us would have wanted. I think we would have liked to have taken more time to engage even more deeply with the stakeholders, but I want to applaud deeply Dr. Hatrick and his team for the amount of work they have done to connect with folks, to understand the best process moving forward, given the amount of time that we have. This report is not the fix-all. We will need to continue having these conversations as a community about how we can best serve our students with the resources we have. And so as a school board member, I look forward to supporting those conversations to figure out what's best needed for our students moving forward for not just next year, but the next three, five, and 10 years to come.
Thank you, Jordan. Go ahead, Noel. Thank you.
I also have read the report and put some thought into it from a business mind. That's what I'm coming at this from, having managed businesses and managed budgets similar in size to the one that the district is managing. So the cuts that need to be made feel massive, but I feel like Dr. Hatrick and the Budget Committee in its entirety did their best to spread the, spread the pain a bit. So there are furlough days being considered, there are positions that need to be cut. They're trying to cut in some areas, like field trips. They're not saying you can't have field trips. We just need to find out how to have them be cost-neutral, so encouraging the teachers to find different ways to be able to do field trips. Basically, spreading the reductions across multiple categories, I think, was the right way to go. But the critical piece now is to get through the strategic planning process and make sure that we don't have this level of cuts mid-year ever again. We need to put a solid five-year plan together and have contingencies so that we can be prepared when enrollment ebbs and flows and funding ebbs and flows because of what the federal government decides to do, and I think we'll be able to react better. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Go ahead, Deltra.
Hey, everybody, we've got a really good superintendent that we hired. That's, that's the first win. The guy's name is Hatrick. I mean, think about it. That's, you know what a hat trick is? So, so what he's, what he's proposed, he's put out a three-phase plan for, for attacking the problems that we're facing, and not surprising that it's got three phases, right? So the first thing that our captain, I will call him, the first thing that our captain's proposed is we've got to, you know, you've got to plug the holes. So he's been, he was been working with his team, again, to, you know, work through systems, make sure things, so that we're not, we're not leeching money anymore. That's exactly, that's where you start. And then he's going to be working on rightsizing, and we're going to see that process going, going on. We've got to make sure that the income and the expense kind of go like this instead of going like this, because that's not happy, that's not good for our, our district. And then the final process, of course, is to, to do the big thing, which is, which is to bring that, bring that debt down again. And that's, that, you know, we can have a debt. We do have to tackle it. It costs money to have a debt, but we will, we will do that. It'll take time. We'll get there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Suzanne.
Thank you. Yeah, I did read the budget report. The panic was palpable when the budget crisis was announced among students, among students because they heard from their parents, I think, and among staff and probably the community at large as well. I was really happy when I read the report that it wasn't a slash-and-burn that so many people were worried. I heard people at Trails being worried that Trails was going to get shut down and teachers were going to lose jobs. The, this, the plan was creative, that FTE was reduced. People who are retiring and leaving on temporary hires weren't being guaranteed replacement. Those were creative solutions, so the pain wasn't quite as, as hard. And I sit on the site council at our local school, and the administrator is given a tremendous amount of opportunities to work with her teachers to come up with a solution that's site-specific. So I was really pleased with that solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Hi. Okay, so yes, I have read the report. I have heard the report, and I've been to all the board meetings about the report. And again, I want to, you know, my hat is off to Dr. Hatrick, who we brought in last year specifically with an eye to somebody who would be able to manage this type of financial difficulty. So phase one was a net reduction of $2.2 million. Last year, we were able to accomplish that without any reductions enforced due to a very generous donation from a private citizen for almost $1 million. So phase two now will be a reduction enforced for the coming year. But again, we want to really approach that smartly, and we want to cause as little change to what our students will actually see and feel in the classroom. And one thing I want to point out is that this is not an Ashland situation. This is an Oregon, this is a nationwide situation. I was just talking with a teacher at Lake Oswego a few days ago, and they are looking at exactly the same things, increasing class sizes, going to blended classrooms. These are things that districts nationwide are doing in order to address this type of budget, and we are doing the right thing.
Thank you. Go ahead, Grant.
Yes, I have read the report. I've tooled over it several times. 27 FTE was a palpable decision, and I know it wasn't taken lightly, and it's going to affect a lot of families. But in order to preserve the Ashland School District, it's a necessary cut that I think was a good business decision. I believe that the report also identifies many, you know, inefficiencies that were existed in the district as far as classroom sizes and trying to right-size the classrooms and do what's best for our students. I think going forward from here, we need to be dynamic. You know, the, the federal government is changing. It's a moving target, and I think the plan allows us for that. It offers a buffer, which is a much-needed asset in this. And then also giving us an ability to see how this affects our children. You know, where's the reassessment and following up and making sure that these classroom sizes, these different changes that we're making for blended classrooms, et cetera, how, how are we reassessing and making those moves to benefit our children?
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Alex.
Thank you. So there was an audit done. I submitted a dossier. Some of you have read it. If you haven't, you, it's on my information out there. I think we have to get our financial house in order, and that starts with transparency. And I have experienced firsthand the sleight-of-hand games of school boards to reduce transparency using nondisclosure agreements, canceling commitments to public speaking engagements, et cetera, et cetera. This audit found that our district took Title I funding for poor children and allocated it to budget shortfalls. No one has addressed whether this money has been reimbursed to those children. Nobody has asked the question why the bond funding for children's school safety was not used for that purpose. It was used to pay for budget shortfalls. This is unacceptable by any standards, and there's no putting a veneer of niceness to that. We have to be honest.
Alex, finish that sentence, please.
Okay, we have to be honest with the public. I advocate for a full town hall with questions and redirecting questions to the public.
Thank you. Okay. Next question. I'm going to start with you, Noel.
Do you want to answer that question?
Yes, you do, Ann. You do get to answer that question. Thank you.
All right, is this, yeah, okay. I heard a number of things as people were speaking that I'd like to sort of address here. We definitely have a budget issue, and we have the best person at our helm to help us solve that problem. But we need more than Dr. Joseph Hatrick. We need a school board that understands not just budgeting, but how that budgeting impacts students, teachers, and communities. And I am that person. I heard Jordan talk about how we overspent last year, and she's right. But we also overspent for multiple years before that. It began with our S.R. funding, when we hired teachers and then had them for the COVID era, and then didn't lay those teachers off again, right? We kept them on, and that was the beginning of our decisions that sent us down this path. So we need to talk about a broader picture than just last year. We need to talk about serving the community with the resources we have, but also how we gain extra resources. Part of that is enrollment, part of that is advocacy. There are lots of avenues that we need to take, and we need to take them with an understanding of education and what it means for students, teachers, and families. And that, I promise you, I can do.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, Noel, I'm going to start with you. All right, I want you to listen very carefully to the wording of this. So currently, the Ashland School District is in the process of negotiating with the developer through the Sunstone Housing Collaborative to consider the feasibility of allowing the development of attainable housing on the property located at Main and North Mountain. What is your position on this, Noel? What is your position on this, Noel?
So for those that don't know, I've been actually involved with the Sunstone project for the last year. It started before that. But I joined the board spring of last year after meeting with the team and hearing about what they were doing to try to get government grants and trying to structure their advocacy work for the project. I have a background in government contracting, and I've spent a lot of time working with legislators and trying to get bills passed, trying to get funding for different things. So I felt like it would be a place that I could really help the project. So I'm very supportive of the project. But I also joined the board because I wanted to make sure that we shepherded that money properly and that we worked to make sure that the project did serve the intended vision of the district. The district has excess land they know they will not need because the school district isn't growing and needing new buildings. And whether or not it lands on the fields down the street or elsewhere in town, I think that our city needs attainable housing, whether that's for families or for staff of the district. And I'll continue to support it and pull it all the way through to the end of the project.
Thank you. Go ahead, Delta.
Thank you very much. Well, I understand. I went to a presentation for the Sunstone project, and I got to tell you that I thought it was innovative. And that it was very innovative. I've heard about our difficulty with housing for 25 years. This is a chance to move forward. I'm tired of not moving forward. That said, boy, I went to a gathering yesterday, and there are a lot of people who are pretty angry about that project, about the way that they weren't consulted. Coaches, athletes, neighbors. And so I think that perhaps it was approached in a sort of backwards fashion, and I'm sorry for that. We need to have trust in order to move forward with a big project like this, if that's the case and if that's what happens. This is something that our superintendent, it is primarily his business.
Go ahead and finish that sentence, Delta.
Sure. Okay. Well, it's primarily his business. But as a board member, you bet I'm going to be out there listening and making sure that it's done well, if it's done. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Suzanne.
Thank you. I support affordable housing, and my hat goes off to those of you who are working so hard to make it happen. I don't support the school board being involved in housing development. I think the school board's job is to focus on children and excellent schools and our teachers and our community in the school district. I don't support using that field for development. Our students are asking for the field. Our students feel unheard. Our students are losing hope. We're not listening to them. And that has a ripple effect in their academic performance and in the general confidence in our school district and our community. People leave this district for sports in other schools in Medford. We should not be getting rid of this field. But that said, I will be the first person to cheer on an affordable development in a different part of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca.
So my stance on this project is probably public knowledge. I absolutely support it. I have no connection to Sunstone myself. The only time I've spent on this is the time during public meetings when we have discussed it. That being said, I am fully in support of this project. I am also fully in support of soccer. I have had four kids who grew up playing soccer. My husband coached a soccer team for eight seasons. It nearly killed him, but he loved it. I support all our athletes. I also support our musicians and our actors. And I support our robotics team and OBAP and all the things that give our students passion and voice and keep them coming to school every day because that is what this job is about. I support all students, and I promise, I have said this publicly before, as the voice of the board, as the current board chair, there will not be a net loss of athletic fields based on this project. I promise that, and as the superintendent, my only employee, also stands behind that promise. We are already looking at reopening three fields at AMS. There are multiple fields that we are looking into developing in conjunction with this project. No student will be denied the opportunity to participate in sports because of this project.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
All right, Grant.
All right. I support affordable and attainable housing. No question. I think we should have 100 projects like this existing in our community. We need to be growing our community. But I don't think this is a school board issue. I think this is a city planning issue. And it's something that needs to be, you know, held to somebody who's actually employed to do these. We need to be focused on our kids. We need to be focused on maintaining assets within the district that if we're talking about enrollment and wanting to grow our programs and grow our schools, we need to not be getting rid of assets at this time. I don't think this is a sound business decision. So you're probably gleaning, I don't support this project. I do support that we do need to come up with funding streams, and we need to figure those things out, but I don't think this is the right means.
You know, I'm going to ask you guys to keep your applause till the end, okay? That just messes up our timing a little. Go ahead, Alex.
Okay, so no, I do not support this project whatsoever, and I'm going to give you my reasons. A school board that just showed that it cannot manage finances, that it cannot manage a general budget, that authorized unlawfully budgets with deficits in it, that now wants to ask for a $10 million loan to pay for deficits of incompetence. That's one reason why. I don't think the school board should be the one with its operators internally handling the financial transactions of this business deal. Lastly, this is sleight-of-hand politics. Attainable is not affordable. Affordable carries legal weight. This project is not going to solve the housing crisis in Ashland. It's only going to take a field away from children to use for their benefit.
Thank you. Okay. Jordan, you're going to bring it on home. Not Jordan? You're sitting so far away from me, and I can't remember you're there.
No worries. Thank you, all of you, for speaking up. I appreciate it.
No, I've been in districts for a long time. And when I first started teaching in 1997, I was in a district where we were growing huge numbers in our district. And then population started to decline. And so 10 years in, we were downsizing. We were doing exactly what the middle school is going to be doing next year. We lost a team at our middle school that I taught in. And 10 years later, we were again having a space needs assessment done because we were growing so much that we were running out of space. So I have lived the ups and downs of enrollment on a very personal level in education in districts much like ours. And so I know that we cannot accurately predict what will be happening 10 years from now in our district, 40 years from now in our district, or 200 years from now in our district. And so selling land adjacent to our school property or developing it in a way that removes it from the school's general use is short-sighted. As a school board, we need to plan for not only next year, but the next hundreds of years with regards to resourcing.
Thank you. Again, Ann, my apologies. It could happen again. Just saying. Go ahead, Jordan.
I feel that the Sunstone project has become so divisive for our community that it's become a distraction and that we are not able to work together right now to focus on our core issues that we're facing because of that division that's occurring. You know, I would call on the school board, and if I was on the school board, I would act to not consider moving forward with this project until we can work together through our strategic planning process and with our partners in both the city and the housing authority to figure out what is the role of the school district in helping support housing for families here in Ashland. There are other ways that we can also address affordability and becoming attractive for families to come back into the area. Those are things I also want to explore, including early learning and pre-K, which is the second biggest barrier for families in our valley. For every one seat of childcare in Ashland, there are three kids that are eligible to sit in it.
It's all right. I think we're done. We can start again. I'm going to start with you, Delta. Okay. The federal government has issued executive orders, imagine that, around dismantling diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as eliminating the U.S. Department of Education. What's the school board's role in responding to that? Delta?
Okay. Well, it's interesting that one falls on me. I know, I know. I guess it's only fair. That's all right. I've been working for social justice and fairness for all of my life, both as an educator and then later as a nonprofit executive. I'm watching what's going on at the federal level and with a lot of dismay. We have values, and they're written into our policy. And those values include everybody. And this is a public school. It is a set of public schools. We must continue that process of including everybody. If we need to take a stand, well, we'll just take a stand, and that's what we'll do. And we'll keep our schools safe for everyone. That's it. Period.
That was fast. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Thank you. It's sad that D E I has become a four-letter word for so many people in our country. It's so much more than what the media is screaming about about gender issues. It is so much, and it's so essential, for a public school to provide an education to everyone. We need to, I'm getting distracted, I'm sorry. The state of Oregon has well-developed policies around inclusion that we're a part of and we will support. And as a school board member, I'm very happy to use my voice in higher levels of government to protect access to education for everyone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Rebecca.
All right. Well, I mean, all I can say is I am so happy that I am here in Ashland because, you know, I mean, it's almost not even an issue. We all feel the same way. At one of the last board meetings, I made a public statement. It was about two minutes long, so I'm not going to repeat it. But essentially, you know, upholding what Ashland stands for. We stand for D E I. I mean, this is not, there's no question here. And we are very lucky to be in this community, obviously, to have the support of this amazing community, but also to be in the state. I mean, there are very, very strict and succinct laws in Oregon that will help protect our students, and it is our duty to uphold those laws to every extent that we can. And we will absolutely continue to protect our students. And I will just, you know, as far as the actual funding part of it goes, again, we are lucky in the state of Oregon that we do have a very strong legislature pro-education. Obviously, we would love more all the time, but only about 5% of our funding does come from the federal streams. And so that's still a significant amount, but we do at least feel like we can stand up to them because we have that safety net of our state and our local support. Thank you.
Okay, Grant. Thank you.
So I'm meeting the needs of our students, you know, and I don't pretend to know what they're going through, and I have a commitment to support those students and listen to them and break down the barriers in order to listen to what our students' needs are and support them through this process, prioritize their equitable resource allocation, a lot of intentional listening, but also just empowering them to vocalize their concerns and giving them, break down the barriers so that they have a right and an ability to advocate for themselves and understand what's needed to support them. I do think we are in a place of privilege. Ashland is a strong, supportive community, and I think we just embolden those supports as what's going on in the world and don't let that influence the way that we take care of our children.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alex.
So we are in unprecedented times in our country right now, and I do not believe that the Constitution will be, this will be found to be constitutional once it makes its way through the Supreme Court, which it will inevitably. You cannot make it illegal to not discriminate, not provide equality. So I would act in open defiance to the current administration. I would, as a school board, advocate that we take the leadership position and that we file a lawsuit against the administration in the same way that Harvard is taking that position and fighting against what they're doing. We should be bold in a time that requires boldness. We are beyond the point of being at all passive at this point, at this moment in time and history. This requires all hands on deck. I would even put a sign at the Welcome Ashland that says, "We are an inclusive and diverse city." Thank you.
Thank you. Ann, how about a view go?
Well, I'm really thankful also that we live in a state that has very clear laws and regulations and policies around diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. So I want to add that A on the end there as well. One of the things I looked at when deciding whether or not to move to Ashland were our test scores for the school district. But I also looked at the disaggregated data, which is when they break out the data according to various groupings. Some of those are racial groups and also then groups according to students who are identified as special education students in need of special services versus the general population. And Ashland has a gap, as every district in the company, in the country, has a gap. But Ashland's gap is smaller than is typical, and that's really important. And that was one of the indicators to me before I moved to Ashland, before I even visited Ashland, that Ashland was a place that took D E I seriously. And when I moved here and I learned about the training that they were doing within the school district, I understood why that gap was smaller. That's really important, not only for all of the students in our district now, but for those families that we're trying to attract to build enrollment. We must continue to take a stand, if it is indeed a stand.
Thank you, Ann.
To treat all students the way they deserve to be treated.
All right, Jordan.
Thank you. D E I is shorthand for recognizing that different students have different needs to be able to obtain learning and success here in our school district. We will stick to that belief and that value because that is clear common sense. What I am most concerned about with the volatility going on at the federal level and the messaging is the impact that it's having on our students' families, which then impacts our students in school. We have had funding cut for our food banks, and food instability is a major impact on a student's ability to learn. Our chronic absenteeism rates have increased as students become scared to come to campus for fear of what might be happening with either their family or their own status. And I'm also worried about our special ed because while we only have 5% of our budget coming from federal sources, part of that is supporting our special ed programs. So it means lobbying at the state level to remove the cap that currently exists on special ed funding so that we can be sure that we're supporting all of our students in the way that they need to be supported.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay, Noel.
Forgetting me. So as everyone else at the table, I'm very supportive of D E I initiatives, and I am thankful that our governor restated that Oregon will not honor the executive order and will be continuing to support our D E I initiatives. But I think the one thing that I didn't hear yet from the group that I'll just add is Ashland needs to also notice that we have a small population of kids of color, and their families aren't always as supported because they aren't necessarily seen in this town. And so I think that having that transparency and being honest about that and making sure that we support groups like BASE that are coming into the schools and trying to boost up those kids and trying to build those collaborations will have them see that the adults in the room see them and are trying to support them and make sure that their education is supported. And I think that our diversity can thrive in that environment as long as we are including all students. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next question. We're going to start with you, Suzanne. Ann, I'm going to give you a chance, I promise. Okay. So with measles outbreaks in Texas, New Mexico, and other states, what do you see as the role of the school board in addressing the issue?
Well, the regulations around vaccinations come from a state level. come from a state level. And I would like to continue to support the state decision. If the state of Oregon requires vaccinations for school entry as a public health and safety measure, I 100% support that. I support science, scientific findings, and public health. If we find in our community... I do know that Ashland has a very high unvaccinated population. It's one of the higher populations. So if we find that there is measles in our community, we're going to have to address some more emergency-type of measures like we did. We have experience with this already, people. We're going to have to protect our population and find ways to keep educating those kids and keep them engaged in safe ways to protect public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rebecca.
Hi. Okay, well, so for those of you who don't know, my actual day job is that I am a physician. So obviously, I have, you know, a pretty significant background in this. So to me, the role of the school board is entirely education. That is really it. As you said, the regulations come from the state level. It's not this school board's job to be imposing anything that isn't already part of our state legislature. But our role as educators is very important, and particularly as we are facing increasing rates of many of these. And as you referenced, Ashland has one of the lowest vaccination rates in the state of Oregon. And, you know, that's a shame to me, obviously, as a physician. So I would love there to be more public outreach to our parents, to be more education, less reliance on our federal government for the information that they are currently disseminating, which is a travesty. And that's really it. We are educators in this situation, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead Grant.
All right, thank you. As a family medicine provider, I get asked this on a weekly basis and putting out a lot of fires. So I agree, spreading information, you know, spreading correct information and squashing what else is out there. But exercising caution. And then also enforcing ASD policy to the purview of the board. I mean, a lot of this stuff is already in place. It's not that we have to recreate the wheel, but we do have to make sure the correct information is out there. And supporting our community through it. Also collaborating with our superintendent. He's our eyes on the ground, communicating with the schools. And just not feeling like one person has to go it alone. We can come to a collaborative, effective plan moving forward. It just have to have the right people at the table.
Thanks. Go ahead Alex.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The federal government has issued... No, no, I'm on measles now, aren't I? With measles outbreaks in Texas, New Mexico, and other states, what is the role of the school board in addressing this issue?
Well, to the extent that any school board... I don't fully know exactly if a school board has authority to mandate vaccines, but I'm sure the state has a standard and that standard should be followed by the school board. I don't think the school board can intervene in state and federal policy in this capacity. I think that while I am in full support of being vaccinated and I'm in support of public school kids being vaccinated, I don't think it is the role of the school board to mandate those decisions.
All right, thank you. Go ahead Ms. Ann.
Thank you. So first and foremost, we follow state policies and data reporting structures that are already in place. So communication between the Ashland School District and the state will be incredibly important. Two, we activate our emergency operations plan, which I believe should have a part of it already in place that addresses things like outbreaks. So we've done the thinking already as a district. We need to make sure that we follow the policies that we've thought about. Three, we need to make sure that we're educating students now and into the future. Students in the classroom, as part of their science curriculum, are learning about things like diseases and what makes them spread and how does that work. We need to make sure that forever, every day, we are providing that education, not just when outbreaks happen. Four, we need to extend that education to the community. And that means by hosting listening sessions with medical providers in the area, by helping people understand that the so-called data, what we thought was data at one point about autism being caused by vaccines has been debunked for many, many years so that we can help people make good decisions based on data and education.
Thank you.
Yes, state policy is what determines what vaccines are required to attend public schools. The school board plays no role in helping a family make the decision of what is best for their family's health. That's between the family and their medical provider. As Ann just stated, it is the school board's role and the school district's role to make sure we are communicating clearly and timely if an outbreak were to occur. That's following our emergency protocols. And again, it goes down to the basics of helping teach our kids science in all areas. And then making sure that we have the resources through schools for families who want to find their own information or need access to doctors because here in the Valley, it is difficult to access some healthcare, that the school district can help connect families with those resources. Thank you.
Great. Okay, Noel.
So it's another one where we all agree, but I think it's important for us to restate those things. I too, my children are fully vaccinated. I support the idea. I knew going into the Ashland School District that there was a very high percentage of unvaccinated families. That exemption rate is the highest in the state. But I think where we all need to recognize the impact is that it does actually impact the school district financially. We have increased instances of extreme absenteeism when children are sick. We had a whooping cough outbreak. And any children who were unvaccinated actually had to be away from school for three weeks because of that. So having that education is so important so that these families understand. But also, we need to recognize that it does have an impact on the kid's education when in some cases, their parents are making that decision for them and then they have to be pulled out of school because of it. So I do hope that we can boost up the education and support what the state tells us we need to do as far as the rules. But don't forget to, you know, teach the families, not just the children, how important vaccines are.
Thank you, Noel. Go ahead Deltra.
Sure. Boy, I think everything's been said fairly well. I'm definitely... Vaccination's very, very important. But, you know, the one thing I didn't hear is I am thinking about those families who are making the choice for their children about vaccination, and they have every right to make that choice. And I want to understand more. I want to listen to those, I want to listen to those parents and I want to understand what's behind that. So not only is there a need for greater education, and there is, of course, you want to get that out there. But I want to genuinely listen. I want to figure out what's going on and see if we can have some dialogue about what's going to be good for everybody. So I'm not going to give up on that group in any way.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to stop the questions for just a minute. I want you, if you have questions for, from the audience, for the candidates, would you pass them to the ends so that we can collect them? Would you do that now, please? All right, while that's happening, I'm going to... Then we'll start again. Good. All right, Rebecca, we're going to start with you. This is an important question. Well, they all are. What the heck. Very specifically Rebecca, how can the Ashland School District increase enrollment?
In one minute, that is quite a challenge. This is something we have been obviously talking about for four years. So I'm going to talk really fast. When I joined the board, shortly after I joined the board, we formed several, we call them innovation committees, where we had one board member collaborate with a group of community members. One of those was called the Enrollment Committee. And it was Jill Franco who was the lead on that one. And it was then subdivided into three sets because it's such an enormous topic. And so those three subsets were, number one, housing. And that's where the Sunstone Project came from. Number two was increasing access to online education. And so that's something that we are very actively pursuing. We have options for students in all grade levels to join the community online rather than physically attend our schools. So that's trying to bring back students who have chosen to not... No, 10 seconds, okay. Sorry. Number three is marketing. And that has to do really sort of with PR and getting the news out that we are a great school system and communicating with all the families who have withdrawn from our district and trying to find out what it is that took them away and what we can do to bring them back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead Grant.
So I think it's key is just why are the families leaving? We need to understand the root cause. It's essential to our mission. So what to do? Direct outreach, I think to echo that point, you know, doing exit interviews and surveys and then making meaningful change with those results. And then don't stop. Keep doing it. Keep finding those answers and keep making those meaningful changes. You know, are we offering the right programs? Are, you know, we don't know until we start talking to those groups of people. Let, also recognize this, you know, what we're doing right. You know, celebrate our successes. Have it out there so people can support and rise to support our education programs. A few quick things that I was thinking about to consider or expand on our existing programs of, you know, dual-language, tag, STEM, partnerships with SOU and local businesses. There is a way out of this and we can figure it out. We just need, we need time and the right motivations.
Okay, Alex.
As a lot of people know, I'm a school safety advocate. I founded the Safe Zone Solution to put an end to school shootings once and for all. The public school system has been compromised by these school shootings. I don't know if people know, I wrote a dossier that I submitted publicly. And the time that I wrote that dossier, it took me four and a half months. There was over 14 school shootings. There have been, since Sandy Hook, over 1,000 school shootings where a lockdown event happened. An entire generation of students have been traumatized because schools cannot withstand the assault from a school shooter like they can from a fire hazard. And those two things have to be joined together, fire safety and school shooting safety. And it is achievable, simple, and realistic. It does not militarize schools to protect kids from school shooting. The Uvalde children only had 12 seconds of protection before the shooter entered their classroom by unlocking the door, by shooting the glass panel out.
Go ahead and finish that sentence, Alex.
They deserved an audit of that classroom and they deserved a bulletproof piece of glass that could have withstood the assault long enough for the police to get there. Thank you. Make schools safer.
Thank you, Alex. Go ahead Ann.
Grant brought up a good point about the root cause analysis, and I think that that is happening already. I know the superintendent has met with a number of folks and we need to continue that work. I'm going to talk about just one aspect of this issue, although I have many other ideas as well. And that's school choice. I want to be real clear that I am not proposing a voucher system like what they're doing in Texas. But what I am proposing is that we look at the schools that have specialized programming such as Willow Wind, Trails, Ashland Connect, Catalyst, The Row, that have waiting lists. All of these schools have waiting lists. Some of the people on those waiting lists are families who are not currently sending their students to the Ashland Public School System. By taking stock of the programming that our families in this community want and need and then tailoring our school programming that we have so that we can meet those needs by diversifying, we then grow our enrollment. We become more attractive to families, not only that are here already, but those that are looking to move here. So school choice is one essential component of that solution.
Thank you.
For me, it's not a question of just how do we increase our enrollment? It's how do we increase our enrollment and better support our students by doing it? There are three things that I would like the district to move forward on. The first one is connecting our families earlier to our school system by establishing early learning or pre-K. That not only helps increase enrollment over time, it helps prepare our students even earlier. And we have shown that it has better success later on for students. Two, I want us to increase our connection with students we lost during COVID. There are roughly 300 to 400 eligible students in our district who are choosing not to go to Ashland Public Schools. Let's reconnect them with increased extracurriculars, à la carte classes, and other options to have them reengage with our public schools with the hope of them returning. And then lastly, let's grow our alternative education programs. Post-COVID, we are having a reckoning on how we approach education. Alternative education programs, like the one Ann listed, are growing in both how many parents want to go there as well as the impacts they're having on students. So let's use those three ways to increase enrollment and improve student outcomes.
Thank you, Jordan.
So in addition to the pre-K program that Jordan mentioned, I think that we can focus even on the infants and toddlers in this town. Part of the Sunstone Project includes a partnership with the Oregon Child Development Coalition. For those who don't know, they run an infant and toddler program at Briscoe School because we closed Briscoe School when we had decreasing enrollment and didn't have enough students to fill that elementary school. And that group already has proven that they need additional seats in this town for infant and toddlers. I've had two children during the 30 years that I lived in Ashland and I struggled to find infant and toddler care for both of them as a working mother. So I hope that we can do an additional pre-K program at Bellevue and Walker and maybe find, you know, that expansion of infant and toddler through the Sunstone Project to keep those families in town. I also support the STEM projects and career development. I think that a lot of families move to private school because they want that college track for their students, the college prep perspective. And I think Ashland High School could do a better job on the college preparatory side of things. And the online academies, I think, are the end game for us, for sure.
Thank you.
We have such a bright group of people here. You know, all of these ideas need to be... We need to call upon all of these ideas in order to do what we need to do. One thing I haven't heard is retaining the students that we already have. And I actually went to a little gathering of Little League yesterday and they were talking about the students who leave Ashland when it comes time to play ball in high school. And I thought, yeah, that's too bad. We need to keep behind the things that make our students feel like they want to go here. The art programs, the athletic programs. I can, we've got to find a way to keep our children engaged. And not only that, but really in love with what is going on in our schools. If we can do that, they'll stay. And I think that that will help us a great deal with enrollment, too. So, yeah.
Thank you. Suzanne.
So there are factors in enrollment that are in our control and there are factors that are not in our control. We know that birth rates are in decline. We know that there's a general migration out of the state of Oregon. Those are sort of out of our control. Within our control, we also know that there are 330-something students in our district that are not attending our district schools, as we know. They are homeschooling. They are attending Siskiyou School. They're attending St. Mary's. They're attending Medford Schools for various reasons. Athletes leave in high school for more athletic opportunities. People go to St. Mary's because they see it as a college prep opportunity. Those are opportunities for us to look at, to grow. I also think we can work together as a community to celebrate each other. The morale is low in the high school. I've talked to students in all levels. Elementary students love school. AMS students love school. High school students, nah, not so much. We need to celebrate them. Get them in the paper when they win a thing or come to their events and cheer them on. These are some ideas that I have. Thank you.
Okay. Has everybody answered? Yes?
Yes.
Good. All right, so Grant, we're going to start with you. We have entered an era in which inaccurate information can be spread very quickly. How will you make sure... I know I heard that, too. How will you make sure that the information you receive as a school board member is accurate? And how will you make sure that the information you share is accurate?
That's a tough one. I guess trusting our resources. If, unfortunately, often the loudest person in the room is the voice you hear. If, unfortunately, often the loudest person in the room is the voice you hear. So taking time to reconcile what information you receive would be really important. Also trusting the sources that you're collaborating with, and make sure they're vetted to, you know, to, to secure that that information is valuable. And also, don't take all of your information from one source. You know, you need to spread the wealth and diversify what, what information is coming in so that you can make educated decisions going out, so.
Thanks. Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, to be honest with you. But I, I mean, I think at this point, I use a very basic fact-checking system for my own information. I mean, I know how to determine whether something I'm reading is factual. There's a process, and I would just use whatever standard process I use now. I would not ever share an article as a school board member that I had not thoroughly vetted that was, you know, completely sourced by accurate factual information. And, but I think, do think that one of the challenges is to help the kids learn how to discern this information. That is critical, because they are on the phones now. It's part of our culture. There's no point denying that the information space is ubiquitous with corruption, so to speak. And it is a challenge that we're going to have to face. But as a school board member, I don't think we have to worry that anyone on this stage would do something like that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Ann.
So there are two types of information that I want to talk about. One is data, and the other is opinion or experience. And so data, we need to make sure comes from reputable sources. A lot of our data is about our school district, and so that we get directly from our superintendent's office. And I do trust that data. The other is opinion and experience. And for that, we're talking about the opinions and experiences of those within our district and of those in the greater community. It's important that we have lots of avenues to listen to folks and to gather that information. But it's also important that we know who the information is coming from and seek out those voices that we are not hearing. Because sometimes, we don't share our opinion or experience because we're not sure we'll be listened to, or because it's too different from what other folks experience. And I think this speaks also to our DEIA initiatives, right? That we take stock of what information are we getting from our community, and how can we actively ask those who we are not hearing from? And there are easy ways to do that through reaching out. And I appreciate the partnerships that we have with community organizations that will help us do that.
Go ahead and finish that sentence, Ann. Thank you.
We are in a wild day and age of information with that world wide web that's out there. You know, I do believe that accurate information, or at least the information we receive, is one of the reasons that we're in this budget crisis that we're in right now. And so one way is we need to make sure we have a school board that's able to assess the information that we are receiving, to make sure it makes sense, not only through our expertise levels and our guts, but if there's something that doesn't feel right or is a red flag, to know how to ask the right questions, or seek out the right people to double-check. Because our decisions can only be as good as the information we make them on. It's also upon us, the school board, to provide accurate information to the community, and not only accurate, but timely. I would like to see us shift to posting our board meetings, our videos, and our minutes much earlier. It takes weeks right now before that can get out to the public. And that's sharing information in a way people can understand. And then lastly, we need to take the conversation from being online to being in person, and going out to the community to have those conversations, rather than expecting them to come to us.
Thank you, Jordan. Go ahead, Noel.
So this is my first time campaigning, and I had not prepared myself for the rumor mill in this town, to be filled with so much misinformation. And sadly, most of it is flying via social media. When I'm meeting people in person, they're listening to me, they're being genuine, they're being honest. But I'm reading those same people are saying really horrible untrue things online about the candidates that are up here. So just know, we're all feeling this misinformation right now. As a school board member, I think it's very important that we don't feed that gossip train, but we pay attention to it. We, we watch and see and absorb what is being said out there so that we can establish those communication channels and make sure that we're correcting that, and documenting out to the community what's really happening and what the real information is behind those rumors. Because often, there is some threat of truth. And to Ann's point, people's opinions and feelings are theirs, and those are very real to them. So we can't ignore that that's happening, but I think it is important for us to dispel those rumors quickly and make sure that we right that ship.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've spent the last 12 years of my professional life as an executive director for an organization that was dedicated to conflict resolution and restorative justice. I'm really, really disturbed by the way we communicate with each other. That's the primary piece. I'm sorry for that. I, I see a lot of this come down from the federal level, where we, there's a lot of whooping going on, a lot of getting people all frothy and everything like that. And I, and I really, the escalation has really got to stop. We've got to find ways to make it stop. And part of it, of course, is listening. We've got to practice good listening, and of course, we need to practice kindness. We're not naturally kind. The internet does not help us. It is an unrefereed forum. I, as a school board member, I'm going to be going and meeting with people face to face. I think that's where the power is. We're going to make some changes that way.
Wow, is information not the sciren call to every educator today? Accuracy of information. I think we all learned in higher-level education to be careful about what our information sources were, primary sources, secondary sources, to understand that all information has bias. Even data has bias. And I think it's very important to pay attention to the sources of information and assess the bias that's related to that. This should be taught in all of our schools. All of our children are subject to an information overload available all the time, in a way that, I mean, none of us grew up with what our children are growing up with now. And the school board needs to be beholden to those same standards that we would expect of our teachers and students as far as accuracy of information, and finding multiple points of view and sources before we come to conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rebecca.
Oh, I feel like I'm at the end of the telephone line here. Could you repeat the question, just so that I know what I'm answering?
Sure. We've entered an era in which inaccurate information can be spread very quickly. How will you make sure that the information you receive as a school board member is accurate? And how will you make sure that the information you share is accurate?
Okay. Well, I guess one thing I would say, certainly, my, again, my background as a physician is very helpful in that, that sense. We are trained for years and years and years how to interpret data, and more importantly, how to analyze data for its strength. So, you know, I'm, I'm very good at looking at data and understanding, is this really meaningful data? Where are the weaknesses in this data? What's missing from this data? How can this data be misinterpreted? So that's, you know, that's certainly, for me, a personal, a personal strength and something that I really, I really do focus on. And again, as far as projecting that back out, obviously, the same standards apply. Certainly, I would also say, as I think I've heard already, we need to be teaching our kids that more and more and more. I mean, how do these kids discern what is real now? I mean, beyond just misinformation, artificial intelligence, suddenly, things are so easy to fake. Anyway, the huge, long conversation that we can have here, but very important role for the school board, I think, to model appropriate behavior for the rest of our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next and last question from here, and then we're going to get to your questions. So, Alex, I'm going to start with you. Can you give us an example of your own K-12 experience, positive or negative, that would impact your role as a board member?
When I was a student?
Pardon?
When I was a student?
Yep.
When I was...
Yep.
So, I was, I had ADHD when I was young. I have it now, still currently. But I, I struggled with that through school. And my whole life was affected by actually a school board's decision and how they used to do things, is they would put "learning disabled" under the door. And I had to walk through that door every single day and ping that message to myself. It did a lot of detriment to my self-esteem. This was in the 80s. We've come a long way. So that shaped me, one, to understand, I missed a chance, because I loved academics. I, I struggled with it, but I, I felt like I could not learn because of what, how the school presented it then. So I guess what I'm, with, with this story, what I would say is that, how that experience shaped me is that I understand the importance of steering a child in the right direction, and the importance, education system is a sacred institution that shapes the way the people that we become. And therefore, that is why I'm so passionate about restoring a sense of safety to children inside of schools.
Thank you, Alex. Go ahead, Ms. Ann.
This is a hard question, right? There are so many things that impact what I would do as a school board member. And so the one I'd like to talk about today actually comes from something that I heard Suzanne say earlier about students feeling listened to, because I do see that. And I've seen that at the school board meetings here in Ashland I've attended, is that our youth are talking to us, and it doesn't appear to them that we are listening. So my experience, when I attended my first school board meeting at age 15, and I attended the school board meeting because my debate team, of which I was a member, had made it to nationals, and we needed to travel in order to do that. And so we needed flights. This was 1990, I think. And that was a big ask for our school district. And the, my experience there with that school board was that we were heard, our interests were valued, and our participation in something that we cared about was supported. And I want all of our members of our community to feel the same way.
Thank you.
Growing up in the Ashland School District, the parts that I remember the most are all the enrichment activities that were offered while I was going to school. We had an incredible theater program. We had incredible sports. I was able to do sports year-round, while also doing mathletes, while also doing the Spanish guanajuato cultural program, while also doing knitting club. I only went to chess club because I thought one of the attendees was cute. I didn't actually play chess, I have to admit. And it is those enrichment activities that are so important to push the boundaries of our students. And it is scary when we're facing budget cuts, because often, it's those activities that go first. And so even though we have limited resources, we have an incredible community that wants to plug into our schools, to be able to offer and help support these programs. And I am so grateful that I grew up here, and that I work here, to have those relationships already in place, to help pull them into the schools, to help our students continue to having a rich and diverse and fun experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm a native Oregonian, K-12 in the public school system, mostly up in the Salem area. And being raised by a single mom who didn't make much, and also wasn't going to be home from work at her state office until 6:00 PM most days, I can say that for me, having the opportunity to participate in after-school activities that did not cost thousands of dollars made all the difference for me. I got the same opportunities as the wealthy kids in town. I had a chance to play on the same teams with them. I got a chance to do Future Business Leaders of America, my equivalent of mathletes. And I want to support those programs, and I appreciate what our community does to support those programs here now. Oregon Battle of the Books being supported by our Rotary Group, and being supported at the state level, I think, makes a huge difference. So as a school board member, I would fight hard for that well-rounded enrichment set of activities for our kids, not just athletics, but theater and academic support as well, because there are kids in this community who don't have adults at home if they go home after school, and they don't have anybody that can get them to those practices. So, thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Well, let's see. I grew up in the 60s. So, and I grew up in Salem, Oregon, yes. And I would just tell you that it was fascinating. In the third grade, all of a sudden, girls got to wear pants. And I felt so happy about that. Let me tell you what, that was the first thing. And then there was this thing called Title IX that happened in the seventh grade. And all of a sudden, we, girls had to have equal opportunity, or equal access to sport, right? And, and all of a sudden, there were volleyball teams, and we wore the boys JV practice football jerseys, because they didn't have any, any jerseys for us to wear. And I'll tell you what, we played volleyball, and it was great. And I'll tell you what, it's what, one of the things that kept me in school. I, I came here to, and saw our kids go through the Ashland School District, and, and I was just wowed by the opportunities that are here. I'm so thrilled by it. I'm going to make sure that that's out there for everybody. I want to keep our kids in school, keep them engaged, and keep them passionate about learning. That's important.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I went to school in Canada, in a suburb of Vancouver, B.C. I went to a French immersion program. So I learned everything in a foreign language, French, which was foreign to me. My first language was German. I went to school in French, and I figured English out. And it's been a lifelong gift. I can travel all over the world and talk to people in their languages. Everywhere I go, it doesn't even matter. It doesn't have to be a French country, a German country, or an English country. I always find ways to practice my language. It's so meaningful. I also grew up in an extremely multicultural community, and in our schools, we celebrated, we spent weeks celebrating all of the cultures of the school by having dance lessons, cooking lessons. I learned how to make French onion soup and wontons, and it was such a celebration and so wonderful. It's, it's continued as a passion for me and a curiosity for me forever. So those were very impactful.
Okay. Thank you. Rebecca.
Okay, so I grew up on the East Coast in a university town, and the public school system there was just phenomenal. I have no complaints about the experience that I had. And that really is what has given me a lifelong passion for what public education should be. We should be, we must be, and we can be the best education out there. If we are going to have an equitable society, public education has to be the best. It has to. Otherwise, we will never achieve equality, because we have to make sure that all students have access to that level of education. That really is what drew me to Ashland. When, when we were looking for a place to move, and we came and looked at Ashland, it felt like where I grew up. And it was a community similar size, had a university there, and just the most extraordinary public school. So I believe so passionately in the power of public education, and that it should be the best that there is. Thank you.
Go ahead, Grant.
All right. Thank you. As an Ashland graduate, I, me being nostalgic about my childhood here is, is kind of what drove me to start looking into the school board, and wanting to bring back some of that, the things that I valued in my education. The thriving athletics, the arts, the clubs, all of the various enrichment things that were available to us. We really had a place of privilege as child, as children. And wanting to bring that back to its glory, and wanting to increase that community involvement. I remember Mr. Titus, one of our mechanics teachers, he would take the classes down to Butler Ford, because he was friends with Chuck Butler, and would walk them through and give them these real-world experiences. Our marketing teacher would do the same thing with us, with just really fostering that community collaboration and raising our children up.
Okay. So guys, these were hard questions. They did a great job answering them. I mean, I think we learned a lot, so let's give them a hand. Thank you all. Did we not finish?
I started with Alex.
No, no, I started with Alex.
Yeah, you did.
We're good. We're good. Thank you for keeping me on, on track. Oh, good, some more. So in the spirit of keeping our time going, we're not going to be able to answer everybody's questions. I have three here that are very, very, to very specific people, so I would encourage you to ask those candidates after the forum, okay? When they're out there in the foyer. So, nothing personal, but I'm not going to be able to answer, I'm not going to be able to get to all your questions, so feel free to talk to them afterwards. So the first question, and now I got to get my glasses on for this. Okay, which ones? First question, there is a proposed bill in the state legislature to teach climate change curriculum, K-12. Would you support it? Ann, I'm going to start with you.
Yes. And while we're at it, though, I'd like to talk a little bit about some other things that are happening at the state level. The governor has proposed a budget that would actually take into account, we talked earlier, Jordan mentioned, the increase in funding for special education, and the way that's counted in the school funding formula. And the governor has proposed an increase to that, that would mean that all of our special education students here in Ashland would count for that increased funding, which is great. It comes with accountability, and the governor's focusing on accountability. And I think we need to be careful as we move forward. I would continue to, for you to ask questions about whether or not we really need additional testing to have the data that we need in order to determine whether programs are working in our schools. From my experience in schools, I know that we already have
From my experience in schools, I know that we already have that data and don't need to test our students three times a year in order to have that happen.
And I will say, Ashland schools already have climate change as part of our curriculum. We have some incredible local nonprofits and collaboratives that are focused on climate change that have been a part of helping design that curriculum. I was adopted very early on and even talked about 18 years ago when I was in school. You know, talking about climate change, though, is not just the curriculum. I think there is a lot of climate crises fear. And I think our students in particular are facing that because they are the ones that are going to be feeling the major impacts of climate change. And so with that curriculum, I would encourage us to talk about how we can have self-resiliency and self-care as we're facing these large existential and very literal crises.
Yes, I too support teaching our children about climate change. And my daughter's in middle school and I can say the most impressive piece that she's experienced so far just in her first year is learning how to research. They're teaching these kids how to do the research themselves and they're teaching them how to persuade and present their research to each other. And I've been so impressed by this group of 12-year-olds and how enthusiastic they are. They are living climate change. They are seeing the smoky summers. They know how this is impacting us right here. This is not a surreal, you know, philosophical conversation for them. It is reality for them every day. So I also support it. I think that across our school system, supporting the science education is really critical. It was painful at the elementary level to lose our dedicated science teacher last year and the classroom teachers are doing their best to fill that gap. Parents are volunteering to come in and fill that gap. But I am seeing it impact the kids, just not having that dedicated, wacky scientist on staff that can help them do the fun experiment. So I continue to support those educations as well.
I thought that one of my jobs as a parent was to help my children fall in love with the earth. And I think I've succeeded. I, when I was growing up, I was a mountain climber. I've climbed eight of the mountains and the cascades and I've watched as, as our climate has been changing. It's very obvious now. I do think we need to, of course, teach about climate change, but we've also got to bolster our young people as well as their parents in the process of learning about climate change. It's, it's, it's big and it's frightening, but you know what? I believe in the earth and I believe in our young people and I believe that we can change the way we're doing things. And I'd like us to, to feel that way and to feel that confidence as we go forward. You bet, teach about climate change. You bet.
Also, yes. And add to it fostering a stewardship for our planet. And add to it adding science in there and understanding climate science. And add to it some STEM education for adding to our changemaker curriculum. There are so many opportunities. In my family, we've started playing a game. We often play the game, if I ruled the world. Long story, but we've started, we've shifted it since my kids know I'm running for school board. If I ruled the schools. And my favorite, my favorite solution, there's some great ones, like all the classrooms should be trampolines. Get this kids, I mean, I'm not proposing this necessarily, but I think it would be fantastic if we could reach this goal. Get the kids, one day a month, getting outside, doing something rigorous at their age level appropriate, whether it's a two-mile hike, a little climbing lesson, kayaking excursion, I don't know. It's, it's a reach because we're in a budget crisis. I get it. But it's, it was one of those wonderful solutions that we came up with on our little family game, so I thought I'd share with it. We love the outdoors. We care about climate change.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rebecca.
All right, I mean, again, this, this is Ashland. Of course, we're all going to say the same thing. Yes, absolutely, we should be teaching climate change. And I mean, I'll just say, I think it's kind of sad that that needs to be legislated. That should just be obvious, you know? I mean, why are we here? Why are we still talking about this? But yes, we should be, and I will second some of the statements I, I heard, that it's a great way to teach also critical thinking skills and assessing data, assessing statistics, and also finding solutions. I think that's really what I would like to see, is not just learning about this process, but how can we be part of the solution? And I think that's what we all are looking to our younger children for. Thank you.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yes, strong emphatic yes. I, I support a comprehensive curriculum. I think climate change, just bringing this up brings up a good point of a more macro view of, of, like Becca mentioned, critical thinking and that questioning mentality. As parents, as much as we beat our heads against the wall when you have a very strong-willed child that wants to question everything, it is a strong life skill. And that, bringing things like climate change up and those really hard adult concepts and working through them and allowing them to ask the questions and working through those answers with them helps foster that thought process. And it can apply in so many different facets. So, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alex.
Yes.
Right. Anamis.
Yes, absolutely. And I, I think an interesting idea that I've thought about often is that I would consider that we make all of our schools have solar panels, try to move away from plastic, that the schools build, like that we would not use plastic in our schools. Plastic is one of the number one major problems that we are having in our environment. And yes, I would actually absolutely love to see a curriculum that addressed a group of future climate activists because this is the issue of our time. And so absolutely, I would promote being a district, a green district across the board. So yes, I absolutely support that.
All right, thank you. Next question. And Jordan, I'll start with you. How would you support integrating preschool into our schools?
Thank you, Catherine. As I mentioned, childcare is a huge need in our community. One, not only are there not enough seats, but two, it is the second biggest barrier families living here because the cost of it is so high. As someone with a kid in childcare right now, it is more than our mortgage. And so integrating childcare into our school system not only makes us more accessible for families, it also benefits freeing up local parents to be able to rejoin the workforce or join the workforce to a greater extent, which is also very needed in our, to support our local economy. Because to be able to attract businesses, we need to have people who are available to work in those businesses. But I'm getting off track. How do we get pre-K or early learning involved with our school system? This has been done very successfully in Grants Pass. Grants Pass School District has offered early learning to all of its students and they offer free child, or free preschool for 36 students. This is all separately funded from the schools, yet it's linked to their school system because the curriculum they teach in those early learning programs ties directly to the kindergarten curriculum. That's what I would like to see us explore as a school district, both for our families and our students.
Thanks, Jordan.
So in Ashland, we have a partnership with YMCA. We're at Hellman. The YMCA runs a pre-K program. And I personally got to meet a couple of the families who said they were so excited because their little one is getting to experience Hellman before they become a kindergartner. And they aren't scared about kindergarten. They already know the facility, they're familiar with it. It seemed from this particular conversation that these two families said, we're staying in Ashland because we had this opportunity. We would have had to leave. Now that is still a cost to that program, to Jordan's point. So trying to find ways that we can incorporate those pre-K programs into our district, find a way to make it free public school, and there are initiatives at the state level to do this. So we need to support those initiatives and try to bring those in. And then, as I said, try to help OCDC establish an infant and toddler extension here in Ashland because Briscoe just doesn't have enough space. And I think that that could go a long way to bringing in that early childhood education even before four years old so that those families don't feel motivated to leave seeking childcare when they have little ones.
Wonderful ideas. I love it. When we tried to find childcare for our twins, that was a, was a, was a big trial to do that. And then once we did, and found good childcare, actually, it was so expensive, we thought it was a warm-up for college, for paying for college. It's, it's really, really something. And what a missed opportunity for us. We've got to, I, I think this is one of the big opportunities for, for improving enrollment and increasing enrollment. If you can get families to buy in right away, early on, and begin to build trust with our schools and with our teachers and, and say, yeah, this is where we, this is where we take our children and this is where they can come and learn and be taken care of and, and loved. I think that's going to be the key, really. That's going to be one of the big keys to, to building enrollment and keeping kids here. So it's really a no-brainer. I, I too think that it's, we need to look on the, for some support from the state. This is a big deal and it needs to happen, not just here in Ashland, but everywhere. This is very important.
So we know, research shows that early learning benefits children in the long run and supporting early learning as a district is in everybody's interest in our district. My kids go to Hellman School as Noel mentioned. Hellman has the YMCA preschool program onsite. It's been beautiful. Parents love it. They have a student in preschool, they have a student in elementary school, one drop-off. It's a dream. And it's great because it creates a relationship and people will stay in that relationship. Hellman School, I think every elementary school in this town, from what I gather, has a very strong sense of culture and community. People get in there and they want to stay, they love it. It's beautiful. And the older kids, my fifth grader loves them. He doesn't interact with them, but he sees them a lot. He hears them, they share a wall. They love it. It helps them feel more mature and older. I think it's, it's beautiful. So the, the relationship with YMCA is successful and I'd love to see that happen in all the schools in Ashland.
Thank you.
So, gosh, I don't know that I have a whole lot to add to what's already been said. I mean, we, obviously, we support these programs 100%. The main problem is getting funding. I mean, they need to be less expensive. They are enormously powerful as far as bringing students into our district. So if we could only get more funding to create more space, that's really what we need. And it's, you know, as you know what's going on with our federal government right now, cutting head start programs. And I mean, it's, it's going to make things more and more difficult. We're going in the wrong direction and we need to reverse that trend. So yes, we're going to have to work very hard to sustain and create more, more space, more support for programs like this if we really want to grow our district. But it's, it's, it's a huge talent and something we are going to be spending a lot of time on in the future, no doubt. Thank you.
So my short answer for supporting integrating preschool is, in any way possible. To echo everybody's point, there, it would be only a positive outcome of, of having those kids integrated sooner. It would be an asset to the parents. But also the, looking for funding and finding ways to fund those programs, finding creative ways to, to dig into what grants are available out there and those types of revenue sources. As a father of two, we had two kids in daycare. It's, it's an insurmountable amount of money every month to try and cover those, those costs. So my heart goes out to those families. And I, at any way possible, I think it's, it's meaningful work to try and search those things out and, and find out meaningful ways to, to move the needle for families.
Yes, I fully support the preschools being in, in, integrated. But like Rebecca said, the only issue is, how do you get the money? This doesn't happen without a funding source. And I would think that we, as a board, should go to the state legislator and start, there has to be a political movement to get this through the finish line. If you really want to have this integrated, you've got to get the public, like yourselves, engaged in this to change the legislative, to, to make a law that these schools will be funded with state taxpayer funding. Or else I don't see how else to do the integration. We'll just be paying lip service to an idea. But I would see it materialized by aggressively campaigning and advocating for this as a state policy.
Okay. So that's all the time we have for Q and A. The candidates will be out there. And did I leave her out again? Oh, my God. What is wrong with me?
No worries, really. You know, I think it's a game now, right?
I think so.
This is good, this is good. You know those moments when like you realize, gee, I should have said?
So the last question about the climate change, I forgot to thank the Rogue Valley Youth Action Team that has already been making strides from our high school to take action and change public policy here in Ashland to have us be more mindful of climate change. So thank you to those students and staff who, from our district, who have worked so hard to make that happen. In terms of integrating preschool into our schools, yes, what all of you have said, absolutely. And I want to talk a little bit more about the integration. Because one of the ways that having preschool programs as a part of our district would help us is by allowing opportunities for those students who are already in our district to have internships and opportunities to learn based on having preschool programs available, right? So opportunities for our high school students to take courses and do training in child development that then could lead to a career in early childhood education. These sorts of internships and mentorship opportunities are something that I am passionate about expanding as we move forward in this work together.
Thank you. I really want to thank Anne for being so gracious for my forgetting her, you know, half the time. So thank you very much. Again, we have no more time for Q and A, but the candidates will be out in the foyer afterwards. So, we have a one-minute closing statement. I'm hesitant to start with you, Anne, so I'm going to start all the way with Alex. And then I'll end with you and then I'll, then I will have remembered it all. Okay, so Alex, you got one minute for a closing statement. Tell us what we need to know.
So I am a father and I take great pride, more than anything else in my life, than being called dad by my two daughters. That is the greatest accomplishment of my life. It is my job to protect my children as an adult and as a steward of, of, of safety if I were on the school board. I just want all of you, parents and community, to understand schools have to be made safer. Kids are stressed out about school shootings. Talk to my children, not because I'm an advocate for it, because it's on the news every day. The classroom cannot hold a lockdown. We ask children to go into state mandated lockdowns in rooms that cannot protect them. That is not fair. There is an easy remedy that does not militarize schools. It just takes a little bit of willingness and an understanding that this is not a political issue to protect schoolchildren from armed intruders that has become a national crisis.
Finish that sentence, Alex.
So whoever wins this election and whoever goes to the school board, I would ask you all to please tackle this issue and you will save the school system. A school can be the safest place in America. Look at the new Sandy Hook and how it was built. Thank you.
Sorry to have to keep cutting people off, but we got to keep us moving. So we're going to come this way now. Grant, I'll have you go next.
Switching it up a bit. So in closing, I want to thank everybody here. I mean, we've all given a tremendous amount of time and energy into this, so, and thank you all for coming today and taking this so seriously. I'm running for school board because I believe every student deserves access to a quality education that starts with leadership grounded in clear communication, accountability, and fiscal responsibility. I will work to ensure that every dollar is spent wisely, every decision is made openly, and the voices of our community are heard. Together, we can build a school system that not only prepares our children for the future, but also does so with integrity and trust. I respectfully ask for your vote and your partnership in making this vision a reality.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I, as I said earlier, I'm the only incumbent who's running for reelection at this point. And we have, the two remaining seats are both representatives who are in their first term. So we have a very, very young board and we have a brand-new superintendent who we absolutely love working with. And so I ask that you really consider the importance of having some depth of experience and knowledge remaining on this board. I hope you take the advice of Pam Marsh, who has endorsed me, said, please support having somebody stay on the board who has that strength and stability. I have been on the board now for four years, the last two I have been elected chair, so I hope that that speaks for itself. And as chair, I was the one that led the search committee that brought Dr. Hatrick to us. And as chair, I was the one that led the search committee that brought Dr. Hatrick to us, and I have just loved working with him for the past year, and I really would like to continue that collaboration. So, thank you, and I hope to see you next year.
Too shaky. I offer my candidacy for the Ashland School Board, coming from an education background. I worked in research, in education research. I have a master's degree in education from the Loyola University of Maryland. I worked over 20 years as a teacher and a head of school, and I think it's essential for some representation on the school board, not all, but some, to have experience, hands on the ground, understanding the experience that teachers have with their students every day, understanding the experience that administrators have with their teachers and their students and the parents and the buildings and the maintenance and the insurance and the challenges every day. I think it's essential to have that voice on the school board and that understanding. It's also been an absolute passion of mine, and I'm very excited to learn so much more about this district and what I can do to promote and support excellence in education for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Delta.
I have a long professional career that spans both education and nonprofit leadership. I know what it's like to be in the classroom. It is essential to understand that, but I also know what it's like to balance a budget and to get to financial solvency. The two nonprofits that I was executive director for, each of them, I took the helm when things were not looking so good and they were spiraling, and by the time I left, things were solid again. We were in a place of solvency, and there was money in the bank. I'm prepared to help our school district find its way back to solvency. I also want to put in a plug for love. I'm not much of a, you know, unicorns and rainbows kind of person. I'm pretty practical, you know? That's a kind of earthy. But I think that love is the energy and the dynamic way that our children learn. It's, it's when that love comes into the classroom, when that love comes into the playing field, that's how it really works. And I want to make it so our school district and our teachers...
Finish up that sentence, Delta.
Okay. I want our teachers to feel the support that they need so that they can do their job and work with our children.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Noel.
Hi again. I'm Noel Christensen. I just have to say, it's been an amazing couple of hours with this group up here. You've got a whole docket of people who all agree on a lot of things. I know it's hard as voters to choose between us, right? If all of us are saying, "Yes, yes, yes." So, from my perspective, you know, I'm running because I have two young children in the district. I've lived in Ashland for 30 years. I've run businesses here. But having a second grader and a sixth grader gives me a little extra passion for what things are looking like in this district for the next 10 years and beyond. And I'll say, when I attended the Martin Luther King event and Dr. Hatrick got up and spoke, from the perspective of the leader of our students, I was emboldened and so motivated to run because I really want to work with this group and work with him. But I appreciate everyone here spending a couple of hours of your Sunday with us and giving some great Q and A questions to add to what the AAUW already gave us. So, again, I'm running from a budgeting perspective and a strategic planning perspective. I'm really hoping I can help this district put together a long-term strategic plan with the community, with the college, with the city of Ashland, and try to find better partnership across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Thank you. Our Ashland school system shaped me, and I am grateful that it will be our Ashland school system that helped shape our daughter. But I am worried about the financial state of our school district. I am worried how we got here, and I am worried about our plan getting out of here. My last decade of work, my master's in public administration, has made me a skilled public finance expert, where I have been involved and a leader in helping take organizations outside of fiscal compliance, help them create accurate, long-range projections so that we can understand what resources are coming down the line, and the ability to work together with our community to figure out the best way forward for us. This perspective has been missing from our school board, and it's one that I'd like to bring over the next four years to help us ask the right questions and raise red flags before the crises happen, so that we have the time to make the decisions that are best for our students, both now and for decades to come. I would be honored by your vote to help support our schools moving forward.
Thank you, Jordan. Last but not least...
Thank you. Budget and enrollment are certainly important issues, and we need to tackle them. I come to you ready, able, and with a background to understand these issues, not just as separate issues, you know, budgeting, enrollment, but how they impact education and how do these things work together? So, I'm a lifelong educator. I literally have a doctorate in education. I would like to put that to use for our district, to help us vision. What do we want for our future? Because providing vision is an essential role of every school board. And then we work together to implement that vision. How does our budget and our budget work support the vision that we want to create for our schools? Because if you just look at budget without understanding that vision educationally, we're gonna fall short of our goals. How can we help our community understand what we offer as a district and broaden what we offer so that we have something for every single individual child within our district? Help families understand that, provide it, and move here for it. I believe we can do this. I know we can. I ask for your vote to help me do just that.
Thank you, Anne. What a thoughtful group of candidates, right? This is amazing. Thank you all for caring so much. Thank you all for caring so much, for being here. I am gonna give you a little bit of homework, though. If you haven't taken out that voter pamphlet, get it out, read everything you can about these candidates, because you've heard a lot of stuff that's probably not in there. Make yourself the most educated voter you can be, and get out and vote on May 20th, okay? So, thank you all for running, for participating, for just being such a caring group. Thank you very much.